Happy lunchtime for everybody. Board directors, superintendent. What we're going to be talking about is transformative social emotional learning in important public schools. Myself, along with Shandra Cooper, who is the senior director over our MTSS systems, along with Jill Bryant, our assistant director, Adrian Breones, and Liz Tracy Aortosis for SEL. What's been wonderful is we have been able to grow our social emotional learning program under the Department of MTSS over the past couple of years due to the superintendent's priority on social emotional learning in PPS and how we really braid this transformative SEL approach into everything that we do. Through a racial equity and social justice lens, we partner that with SEL, Trump-informed practices, and restorative justice. And we really work on not only providing those proactive supports, but also the supports when students are struggling. And we do it through a tiered support system. So I just want to thank you all for being here today. We are going to talk to you a little bit about SEL. We will go through an activity, just like our students do, and hopefully it just gives you a better understanding of SEL in PPS. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to Jill Bryant.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Roseanne, I'm not seeing the chat option. Is that going to be an option for us? Or?
It could probably do a chat on this one if we keep it, if it's visible.
It's in my settings to disable it in advance. I don't think I can enable it from here now at the meeting.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
And there's one of the exercises calls for us to use the chat at some point. So maybe there's an alternative. If we can't, if we don't have access to that.
Yeah, we can, we can adjust, we'll adapt. Well, let's just, I'll take 10 seconds here to introduce myself. I'm Jill Bryant, my pronouns are she/her, and I'm the assistant director of SEL. Adrian?
Hi, everyone. I'm Adrian Breones, my pronouns are she/her, and I am an SEL TOSA with the team.
Liz?
Hi, I'm Liz Tracy, my pronouns are she/her, and I'm another TOSA on the team.
Shandra, does everybody know you already? Are you already famous?
I don't know about that, but I can introduce myself. I'm Shandra Cooper, pronouns she/her, and I am the senior director for MTSS. And as Brenda said, thank you so much for having us and being able to reschedule this. I really appreciate this.
Yeah, we're super excited to have the opportunity. So we'll, we'll just get started since it's already nine after. So we're going to just take, we're just going to start by taking one minute to watch this video here, so.
And we have a lot of evidence that social emotional learning has made a difference.
We had a graduation rate of 62%. Last year, we put up a record-breaking 84%.
Over the last five years, our expulsions have been cut in half.
We were suspending about 13,000 days of out-of-school suspension. We were 10 times the average for any school district in Ohio. And within that first year alone, we were able to reduce our out-of-suspensions by 55%.
Attendance rates went up. We know that attendance is directly correlated to academic improvement and achievement, but it also had other outcomes that were extremely important, which is students feeling more connected to schools, educators having to think outside the box, helping students overcome some of the challenges that are in their life.
There's an 11:1 return on investment. So for every dollar invested in programming around social emotional learning, we're seeing that they're saving $11 on remedial programs, dropout prevention. There's lots of reasons that people are coming to the conclusion that this is something that we need to be prioritizing.
Okay. So we are going to start with a warm welcome, and we'll talk a little bit more about the three signature practices, and the warm welcome is one of them. And this is something that we are pushing out district-wide for, really is our easy district-wide implementation of SEL. So the first signature practice is the warm welcome, and some of you may or may not have experienced that yet. But this is our opportunity to just get present in the room, make a connection, essentially what it says, a warm welcome. But what we'd like you to do, and we don't have a chat, so if people could just unmute and share, what's, when you think of SEL and PPS, what's, what's one or two words that come to mind?
I'd say forward-thinking.
One or two words, how about intention around the wellness and health, health, mental wellness, mental well-being of all of our students?
How about crucial when we've got basically a mental health crisis amongst children in this country?
Caring communities.
Sorry, what was that? Sorry.
Caring communities.
And I said comprehensive.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, so today, we've got a few goals in a short period of time, but we're going to just start by spending a few minutes at the beginning to look at, explore how SEL is already embedded in PPS through our theory of action and our vision. And we're going to just take a really quick, high-level overview of the implementation plan, and then already started becoming familiar with the three signature practices. And we know that you, we heard that we should prioritize on you experiencing SEL lessons. So that will be the majority of our time today. So first, what we're really excited and love that we have the support from the superintendent is we have our, have been in partnership now with CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. It's really the leader in, the national leader in helping districts to implement district-wide SEL. They've been doing this work for 20-plus years and building their research base. And we meet with them, it's like having a whole nother team. We get four to six of them once a week, sometimes twice a week. We probably work with them up to five hours a week in addition to lots of other work they're doing for us. And they are helping us build our five-year plan, implement our five-year plan as well as a continuous improvement. We've got their other research department, evaluation department, working for us. So it's really quite exciting and quite a robust and beneficial partnership. And also, what's, we wanted to just note that we also have Council of Great City Schools, who are also partnering with CASL. And you can see there some of the districts that are in both of those partnerships that we're in.
So like Jill said, we want to take just a few minutes to talk about SEL, the big picture. And at the end of this, you also have links to multiple resources that you can look into to dive deeper into SEL if this is just a little bit and you want, you want more information. So for this, for us to really understand how SEL is going to support PPS, let's first look closer at the definition. So as you can see here, CASL provides a couple definitions. This, there's one that is more of a research-based academic definition, that isn't this one. And then there's the transformative SEL definition. For today, we're going to explore the idea of how transformative SEL aligns nicely with Portland's graduate portrait, our theory of action, and our strategic plan. What we know is that SEL has the power to advance equity and excellence through authentic partnerships, trusting relationships, rigorous instruction, and ongoing evaluation, just to name a few ways. This work centers on identity, agency, and belonging. The CASL framework is another way to look at the various components of SEL, and that's that circle that you see on the side there. So you can see that there are specific competencies in the center of the wheel, and as the outer rings are also equally important because they're about how we implement a solid SEL plan. Part of the work that we're going to be doing this year is creating our own definition of SEL that applies to PPS. And we're in a great starting space, but we need some collaboration to make sure that we have a shared understanding of SEL in our district. So let's take a closer look at how this framework here supports PPS's goals on the next slide. So we already have an amazing plan in Portland through our graduate portrait, through our theory of action and our strategic plan. And so SEL is just one way that we're going to support obtaining our goals. And you can see in the visual how each one of these really aligns nicely with the framework. And again, we're, we're rushing through this part because we really want you to be able to experience a lesson, but we are happy to come back as much as you want to talk more about SEL. Okay. So one of the things that CASL helps us with is using their theory of action to implement SEL in our district. And this visual is just, is just what their theory of action is. And I'm going to point out the why first. So you see those student outcomes, those align really nicely with what we're hoping for in Portland as well. And the goal, or the idea is, if we understand what those student outcomes are, we can use the framework in the center and the cycle of continuous improvement in those, those four areas to help us get to those outcomes. And through the five-year plan that we have, we're hoping that we're going to actualize this theory of action in our, in PPS. In the post-session materials we have shared, there's a draft of the five-year plan and a feedback form. We're hoping that you'll have a chance to take a look at that five-year plan and then access the feedback form to give us your insight or your thoughts on how that applies. So again, that will be in the post-material that you get afterwards, I think, from Kara. Okay. I feel like I'm rushing, but we really want to make sure you have time for the lesson. So I'm just going to keep pushing through. Jill talked a little bit about the three signature practices. And what we, what's, I think, really nice to know is that this is one strategy that we're using just district-wide to start implementing SEL now without it being rushed or not a thoughtful approach. And so the three signature practices, like Jill said, are just these three strategies of a warm welcome, engaging strategies, and an optimistic closure. And the beauty of these is that they can be incorporated into anything that we do. They can be incorporated into staff meetings with adults. They can be part of our lessons that we do with students. They can be in math or in reading. They can be in any part of the day. And if we center on these three signature practices, we'll see the sense of identity, agency, and belonging start to shine through, throughout the school day for our students and for our staff. So throughout this time together today, you're going to get a chance to see the three signature practices in action, just like you saw the warm welcome this morning, or this, at the beginning of our time. So I think we're ready to dive into the lesson. And again, we'll have lots of information and invite us back as much as you'd like for some, a deeper dive into SEL, if that works for you.
Okay, the tree service decided to come right now and do some chipping of branches. So hopefully you can. I don't know how loud that is for you. Okay, it's very loud for me.
You're doing good, Jill. We can't hear it.
Just on the three signature practices, I wanted to say the central office, even at the Leadership Institute, they've been using those there. And maybe the school board would want to integrate those in some way. Who knows? All right, so for the lesson.
Jill, just like you, you made me feel welcome when we started this call.
Yeah. That was the opposite, sorry. Okay, so this is the engaging strategies portion of our session together. And we actually, Adrian, we've caught up, we're only a minute behind now, so we can take a breath. But this is what it's, what it says, the engaging activities, where we really engage in the work. And so what we've decided to share with you is a lesson from the unit that the MTSS SEL team developed during CDL for K8. It's about a 10-week lesson. And not everybody used it, but a lot of people used them. So we decided to share this with you. So here we go. So this is something that, what we're using is what the middle schoolers use. And some of you may or may not have seen this. So we're going to start our lessons with a warm welcome. So this is starting the student lesson. And if we had the chat, we'd ask you to put a word or two that captures where you are right now. So whoever wants to share out. I might put a little nervous and excited. Who else?
I'm feeling calm and energized.
I want what Scott had for breakfast.
Okay, I'm going to go with Scott.
With what?
I'm going to go with what Scott said. I think those are really descriptive of where I am.
I'm feeling stressed, but also grateful.
I am distracted and annoyed, mostly because Comcast is here trying to install new Wi-Fi at my church, and it's going swimmingly, the guy is great, except my laptop has decided it doesn't want a Wi-Fi anymore. So you're on my phone oddly and my pencil holder while we do this. That's where I am.
One more person want to share? Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I think I'm drained and motivated, which are a little bit opposites, but that's where I think I am.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. So we'll go on to the next one, next slide. So a few weeks ago, when we were supposed to present after the board meeting, you're, you were given the pre-homework of watching this video. That was probably centuries ago in your, your memory. So I'm not sure if anybody watched this or remembers it. But we, we have a plan, because we anticipated you probably wouldn't have had time or forgot it. So I won't even put you on the spot like I did Director Bailey to see if you did your homework or not. So basically, this video is what it says, is, is why do we lose control of our emotions? And I'll go into that, we'll discuss that briefly shortly. So this video is what our middle schoolers watched. And then this book is what we had for our K5. And for our unit, we tried really hard to find books. We had to find books that were read aloud, read-alouds already created, and then read-alouds that had a Spanish version as well. Quite a challenge, but we, we did a pretty good job of bringing that together. So flip your lid, and this is the video. Did, has anybody heard the concept of flipping your lid? Anybody care what they know about it? Think they know what comes to mind?
I think about the fails I see on Facebook of like a pressure cooker lid embedded in the ceiling. For me, flip your lid means to be like upset or like
bubbling up. Chaotic in emotions. That, that's kind of what I think of when I hear that.
Yeah. Thank you. What else? Can think about, if we say, you know, we all say, oh, don't flip your lid. So what, what, what does that mean emotionally or physically? What else comes up?
It's, to me, it's like at the point at which you just kind of lose control over your emotions and, and you emote, or you, like the, the picture says, the kid's got steam blowing up out of his ears. It's at the point where you lose control of yourself.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great, both, both of those are all true. And has anybody seen the, the hand model that Dr. Siegel does to, to show that? I see Director Moore nodding. So, so I'll use the hand model here. This is what the video is to show. And we use this as adapted, but even when I was working with Head Start, even with the four-year-olds, it was really fun to see them understand this concept. But basically, the concept that you have an upstairs brain and a downstairs brain. And the upstairs brain is our frontal cortex, where we're able to think critically and solve problems. And our upstairs brain is more, it moves slowly, and it's conscious. And evolutionarily speaking, it's the last, it's the last thing that's been developed. And then also developmentally, you probably, probably all have heard what's been in, you know, the science lately about this really is developed fully, not till we're 24, 26. And then our downstairs brain, the brainstem is where is unconscious. It's instantaneous, and it's really where the fight, flight, or freeze happens. And so basically, and then here in the midbrain is where our hippocampus is, is our memory is stored. And so what happens is, when we flip our lids, literally, the, the reason this is a great model is our lid get flipped, lids get flipped, which means that this upstairs brain is no longer talking to the downstairs brain. And the downstairs brain, the fight, flight, or freeze, has taken over. And so no matter, like we try to tell teachers, but with, with children too, no matter how hard we try to reason our way out with others. So maybe you with partners, you might have said, just calm down, just calm down. They, you can't, because they're, they're no longer talking. So we could offer a five-year-old 50 Oreos to calm down and think rationally, but that it doesn't matter, because our ability to reason and problem solve is disconnected. And so it's not until then our system, our cortisol and our nervous system calms down till they're back to connected, that then we can begin to slowly reason and think critically. Does that resonate with people? Makes sense. That, that bit of information can be very, very powerful for, for, for many, especially for our adults. But in, in Head Start, the, the, the parents would come and they'd say, ah, my four-year-old told me not to flip my lid. So it was very sweet. Okay, Adrian, I think you're up.
Thanks, Jill.
I know you're up.
So this unit, this resilience unit, there were lots of strategies that we were hoping students could take away with, and that one of those would be one that would work for them. Or maybe there would be multiple, but at least there would be one strategy that they could see as something that empowers them to be able to have that resilience through the difficult times that we're experiencing, especially right now. In previous lessons of the unit, we've, we've talked about these different strategies. And on this slide right here, you can see the resilience toolkit handout. And so this is a list of the strategies that if you had experienced all of the other lessons, you would know these, and you would know which ones worked for you. One of them is a helper tool, and that's something that was brought up in the video as well. Who was that person, who was that adult that you can go to that, that can support you when you're feeling escalated for whatever reason? And at this point in this lesson, we would ask students to think about who is the adult that you can go to, and also honor that sometimes you just need space. Sometimes you don't need an adult, but you need that time to yourself and to know that that's okay too. And really, the most important piece is that it's important to know that you have choices when you're in that red zone of those emotions that you see on the slide, that it's up to you to decide what works best for you, and that by talking about it now, when we're not in the red zone, we're going to be more likely to use these strategies when we are feeling those big emotions later. So for this lesson, we wanted to give students the chance to think about their range of emotions, to also think about how their body tells them those warning signs that they're having those emotions. And then also, what are the things that I can do because I have some control over the situation for myself? What are some things that I can do to help myself get back into that green space, that calm zone? So this is where we're going to dive into another slide deck. And I'm wondering, Kara, if you got my email with the link? My hope is that you all will get access to this link, and then you're going to open it up with me, and you each have your own worksheet that you're going to work on.
Roseanne? And I'm forwarding it right now.
Great. So
So I've have to apologize in advance because I'm on, I'm on a phone. So I might be challenged to work on a worksheet. I can open it up, but I might have a challenge.
No worries. You, you will not be graded on this assignment, and it's just a chance for you to see what it's like. So you don't
Perfect, thank you.
It all through in your head, and you don't need to even fill out the worksheet. So
Thank you.
Let's swap over to that slide deck, and Jill's doing that for us now.
Can you see it?
Yep, can you present it?
Sure.
So Jill, go ahead and scroll down to slide six for just a moment.
This one?
Nope, keep going, please. Few more. Okay, this one. So the goal would be, by the end of this lesson, that each student would have their own personal confidential worksheet that they would be doing. There's a K5, one that's a little more friendly for younger readers, and then there's this one that's for our older students. So Jill, I'm going to ask you to jump back up to slide two to step one. And we're going to give you just a few minutes to think about this on your own. And so for step one, you're going to find the slide with your name and the notes. And there's one for each of you. And step two is that you're going to add pictures or words that describe how your body reacts when you're feeling the corresponding emotion. So think about, what do you notice? For example, if I'm in the red, my body starts to shake. I can feel it shaking. If I'm in the yellow, I sometimes laugh because I'm just kind of uncomfortable, even if it's not a funny situation. So what are the things that you notice in your body? Or where do you notice it? Do you notice it in your head? Do you notice it in your stomach or your leg shaking? You're going to think about where you notice it so that you know those warning signs that you're starting to go up that escalation. And here's an example of what that might look like on your own worksheet. So we have three minutes to look at, to, to go through the first one, the, this first step, thinking about the emotions where you feel it and what that looks like. And you can write it down on the worksheet if you'd like to, or on your own. And we'll come, we'll pause for just a second so you can do that and then come back together. And we'll come, we'll pause for just a second so you can do that and then come back together. Go ahead and wrap up the part you're working on now. As you're finishing up, hopefully, in a classroom setting, there would be a, a lot more time for students to explore each of these spaces, to have some time to think, to reflect, to have conversations if it would be helpful. Um, but just to really know that this can be fluid as well, that it might change. As you grow up, you might notice the feelings differently. And as adults, we might notice them. And really empowering students to know that this, this fluctuates and it can change, and it's just the power of knowing it, that's important. We're going to do step two now. And Jill, if you'll move to the next slide. So for step, step two, now we're thinking about all of those, those str- strategies on the resilience toolkit. Or for all of you, it might be strategies you already use that aren't on the resilience toolkit. And you're thinking about, if you'll move down to the next slide now, Jill, please. You're thinking about, when I feel each of these emotions, what's something that I can do to support myself? If I'm in the green, what's the thing that I'm going to do to help me stay there? But if I'm in yellow, orange, or red, what are the things that are going to bring me back down to the green? Or if I'm feeling blue, what's the thing that's going to help me get back to green? So it's not that green is good or I'm happy, it's more that it's, I'm calm. I, I feel like my lid is not flipped, right? That I can make decisions, I can communicate, I feel in control of myself at that point. So take a couple of minutes again to think about what is the strategy you would use for each one of these. And I'll, we'll do two more minutes for that time. And you can do that back on your individual worksheets. Just a couple more seconds to finish what you're thinking about. Okay. So the end goal, again, is for students to have a more clear picture of how their bodies feel in the continuation, continuum of emotions, and then also to have strategies that are handy for them that they've already decided might work. And like I said earlier, by practicing this skill in a calm, supportive state, students are more likely able to access it independently when they need to. Thanks for engaging in this part of the lesson with us. We're going to switch back over to the main slide deck now for the rest of our time together.
Roseanne, is our in time 12:45?
So as Jill switches us back over, the last part of any lesson that we would suggest would be the third part of the three signature practices, that optimistic closure. And the optimistic closure is a way to either wrap up what has been done. It might not necessarily be optimistic, but it gives us a chance to um, come, to think about what we've learned, or to think about what's coming next, or to give us a chance to pause, to get grounded where we're at, to be prepared for that transition. One of those examples is a shout out, you know, where students can just shout out, um, thanks, or things that they appreciated in the middle of the, of the lesson, and then wrap up with that nicely. One other thing we wanted to point out was that part of MTSS, the rapid response team, has been so- supporting with these at-home strategies. And this is one of the at-home strategies that corresponds nicely with this lesson. And it's a way of helping parents and families use the same idea of this escalation cycle to think about their students, to think about how, what do I notice in my kid that is telling me that they're getting to that red zone? And so it's a strategy that we also linked in the the resources at the end, so you can see it. But just to know that we've been trying to make sure that the SEL stuff is embedded throughout and that we're reaching families as well as our staff and our students. We're going to skip the recap for today and do our optimistic closure for our time together.
Yeah.
Jill, you want to lead that part, or would you like me to?
I can do, but my, if my internet is failing, then take over.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, is there, um, I know that we're going to wrap up really quickly. This is board member Michelle. Um, is there a place I can, um, I can submit some questions? I have some questions. Um, I don't want to take up time here that, um, I have. Who, who would be the best to address those two?
I'm, I'm wondering if we can stay a little bit later since we got a late start. If folks are, okay, adding another 10 minutes or so. I think we started 10 minutes late.
And Director, you could go ahead and send me any questions. You could send them my way. And I'll make sure, uh, that Shandra and Jill and, uh, their team, um, are able to answer those for you.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And can you CC the rest of us on the, uh, reply? Would be great.
Happy to do so.
That would, thank you for that reminder. And I can't, I can't stay late. I do have a hard stop today at 12:45.
We also have a feedback form that we're really hoping to get feedback from all of you on this presentation and how helpful it was. And there is a place there that I think you could add some other comments or thoughts as well. And so you, that's, you can see that on the last slide that we're showing. So because our time is at an end, here is the final question that we have for all of you. And we would put it in the chat, but because we're not using the chat, if you want to popcorn out by unmuting your mic, feel free to do that as well. Here's the question. What is one way the SEL is connected to your work as a member of the school board?
Well, I'll just jump in with the obvious answer and the easy one, which is why I go first. Um, it's, you know, it's connected to our goals, right? And, and the more effective we are with social emotional learning, the more effective we're going to be achieving the board goals that, that we've laid out for the district. And I, I also need to go, but I just want to say thank you, um, for this. It was really helpful overview, um, and such important work. And, and you know, one of the questions that I'll have, I'll just sort of, sort of say here is, is how do we measure the success of this, right? And I know that's a challenging thing in anything we do as a district, but it is so important for what we do. And I guess, I guess, how do we know we're getting forward movement and, and forward movement with the, with the, um, the places where we most need it? And, you know, the thought that came to my mind was, um, you know, I, I come from, I'm not in any way a therapist or social worker, but I come from a family of therapists and social workers. And so, you know, this, this, this resonates very, you know, um, clearly with things that I've heard, and I think people embrace. But I also know there are lots of people who don't either think this way, or, or even think this is sort of legitimate, right? This, this whole sort of, you know, being in touch with your body. It's more of a, you know, just, just, just deal with it, suck it up, move on. And my question, not for here, but sort of generally is, is, is how, how are we effectively reaching some of those kids and frankly, some of those families, right? Where the lesson they're getting at home may be very, very different than the lesson that, that you just provided us here today. And it seems like a real, um, challenge to reach those kids.
Thank you. We're really excited about our plan for those exact things that you talked about. And so hopefully, we'll be able to share more of those details with you soon.
Thank you. Appreciate your time today.
So one way for me, this is Juliette, one way for me that it connects with our work is just given where we are and just sort of super unique time, point in time in, um, in our country and that, you know, what's happening with our students is there's probably never a more important time that we're having conversations about this and helping, um, our students and their families, um, sort of navigate through just an unprecedented situation, um, and just keeping this front and center, uh, because it's hard for people to think about the academic work or that, all the other things that need to happen, um, when there's lots of other things, um, that are sort of front and, front and center that, um, our students and family are dealing with.
Thank you.
I also think it connects because we have to collaborate and work as a team. And there's a lot of intensity and a lot of, um, you know, deep conversation that can be really difficult. And so being aware of SEL is also good just for us as a board, as we work together and work with the staff. Um, so I think it's, it's connected, like Andrew said, to our goals and to the work we do with students. But it's also for me, um, doing some social emotional learning as a board together helps us work together more effectively and in a healthier way.
Yeah, I, I, building on that, the more we model the values that are in the graduate portrait, the more coherent we are as an organization. Uh, the better I do at listening instead of reacting. Uh, I'll be a much better board member. We'll have much better discussions and get to better solutions uh, when we're grappling with some really complex issues. Um, and, and it's really interesting. I thought Andrew had a, a great question about, you know, reaching down to families. Um, I think one thing is we, we don't have a hugely robust parent involvement uh, program in this district yet. Um, I've done, before I was on the board, I did a lot of parent engagement stuff. And I think we can make the case that empathy, you know, when we're reaching out to parents to say, here's how you can help your child get literacy skills, that empathy is just as much an important skill in their child's ability to learn as the, the literacy or math or whatever. If we're having a family math night, we should also have a family empathy night. And way back in the day, I worked in, in social services and I trained, uh, volunteers in listening skills. Um, and it's great to see the, that, just a real correspondence with those specific skills of, these are door openers. They get the conversation rolling. Um, these are how to identify emotions, which increases the trust and, oh yes, you're listening to me. Uh, how to connect those emotions with what's going on in the real world. And so we, we had this whole skill-based, step-by-step system of really teaching empathy and problem solving. So to see the, uh, the basics here being rolled out is, is really great. And what we got a lot of was, uh, you know, we do, I think, eight nights of training for volunteers. And after the third night, or around the fourth one, people would come in and say, wow, I just tried this out with my kid and it was amazing. So, uh, these kinds of skills just help all the way around both parents and, um, and our students. It's great stuff.
Yeah, just as we wrap up here, um, I just wanted to say that you, the last two people mentioned the, the adult piece. And that's really where we are wanting to start is with the adults in the system. And, um, as opposed to just seeing that there's a set of competencies that we need to give to children and um, we, we know that those competencies have the potential to be used weaponized against kids, in particular, our, our BIPOC students, and trying to get children to conform to white norms. And what we really know is that we as adults, you know, the SEL is a lifetime endeavor. And the more that we as adults and we as a system work on the conditions and the environment and the policies and modeling and practicing ourselves, that then that can help create that culture to, of SEL and then help us to actualize, um, those portions of the graduate portrait and the, and the theory of action. So it's nice to hear you, you mention that.
And, and Jill, you remember when we were building the vision and graduate portrait, how often those who participated in that process brought up the word empathy? I mean, it was one of the number one, one of the top 10 at least, if you did one of those word bubbles, in terms of what people wanted to see happening in our classrooms. That was, that was big.
Yeah. I know I need to wrap up. Brenda, did you want us to mention ELDP or?
I would love that. If you just want to give them a, a tiny little snapshot of, um, our partnership uh, with ELDP and the National Equity Project, that'd be great.
Yeah, so, um, what's really exciting is, um, we've been working with Castle to, to have RESJ, so SEL be in service of racial equity and social justice. Um, seeing SEL as a lever for equity and to, to really create a way to co-construct a strategy for actually making that happen. And we got invited by, um, Castle and the ELDP Equitable Learning and Development Project, um, which is working with the National Equity Project, um, University of Chicago and the Bell Institute, working in this partnership where, um, we will be one of a very few districts. And, and thank you Superintendent for, for bringing this, letting, having us do this and, and helping to lead that. Um, this partnership, we're great, basically going to be co-constructing, um, our own prob of, of practice of how do we actually do that? There, there's literature out there that says you can do that, and the SEL should be in service of equity, but there's no field-based data showing this is actually how it's done. So we are working with them in a multi-year, um, commitment really to, to have a problem of practice. And they will be documenting, providing us, uh, research support, providing us coaching support, um, to, to figure that out. And then it will, this, the learnings from the few districts in the nation then will be published out saying, well, this is what was tried and hopefully this is how it, one way it can be done, um, to build that body of literature. So we are super excited by the potential to actually have RESJ, BRAID RESJ and, and uh, or SEL as a way to help us get to those goals. So, super exciting. Okay, it's Five Tell. Got our 10 extra minutes. Thank you all so much. Uh, wish we had more time. Uh, I look forward to being in person and hopefully you all will be interested in getting the foundational SEL training as we roll it out here in the next, uh, by the end of the school year.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
And by the way, uh, Castle was just blown away that, uh, our board was interested in getting the, uh, foundational training. They said, this person we work with in her 10 years, that's never happened. So she's, thinks you all are, uh, super board members for that. So that's great.
That's the optimistic closing.
Yes. Yes, indeed.
That is very optimistic. Uh, Superintendent, do you have anything else?
Uh, I appreciate everyone taking a little time to dedicate to this really important topic for a lot of the reasons that were already voiced, particularly uh, at this time when we know our students, we're really going to need to attend to not just their academic, uh, acceleration, but also We're really going to need to attend to not just their academic acceleration, but also making sure that they're healthy, that they're socially, emotionally. Well, this morning I was in a conversation with many of my peers and the governor's team. And as kids are coming back, there are a lot of obvious signs of, of a need to put attention to, to our students. So the more we can learn and be equipped and deepen our understandings, that'll, that'll strengthen our capacity to really meet our students' needs. So thank you everybody for a commitment to continue to, to learn more about this important topic.
Bye, take care. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.